The history of this place.
I think, uh...
How did you ask me? You know we can... I'll tell you. In any event, that being the case, I suppose what I'm gonna ask is... Well, when we go through... Should we go through it? Because you should have throughed the agenda and see where we are. Because there's only one matter. And that's the regular matter here. Wait, sorry, I'll see.
Yeah, I think somebody noticed a lot of police. I have these questions. I'm not gonna... Yeah. Yeah, but I... That's more than... Okay, okay. We have to be... I don't know. You have to be in work for that paper.
We will have a form. We'll have four of them. Or we don't have five here from the... All right, one year, sorry, in fact, please. Uh, Maria. The pain. Maria. Our secretary. Um, let me do the open public meetings. This chairman, this before some... Uh, I'm calling if you send it for water or keys. Can you still be happy? Oh, yeah. Is this on?
It's a mail. No, that's not.
Is this on, Alias? Uh, as presiding officer of this regular meeting of the Western Europe Zoning Board of Adjustment, I do hereby publicly announce that the notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied. Further, I direct that this announcement shall be placed in the minutes of this meeting. Notice of this meeting was properly given by the Western Europe Zoning Board of Adjustment in the schedule of 2013 meeting resolution dated and adopted by the zoning board at the end of last year. Said 2013 meeting schedule resolution was appropriately published in the Jersey Journal, publicly posted on the municipal bulletin board, and filed with the town clerk. Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Here.
Melissa Rodriguez.
Here.
Casey Alvarado.
Yeah.
Maria Hernandez.
Yeah.
Larissa Marero.
Here.
Okay. Uh, I suppose the first question I should ask of Marissa. Marissa, what is your full name, for the record?
Larissa Marero.
And Larissa, you're a member of the Western Europe Planning Board, and you've been asked to sit on this Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting tonight as an emergent member because we are lacking some members of the zoning board. Is that correct?
Right.
Do you have any relationship whatsoever either to this zoning board or to the town of West New York in the sense of being an employee of the town, having any business before this board, or sitting on any other board in town?
Not.
Okay, thank you. Maria, what is your full name?
Maria Hernandez.
And I say the same thing to you. You're a member of the Western Europe Planning Board, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've been asked to sit tonight as an emergent member of the zoning board because we're lacking full membership on the zoning board. Is that correct?
Yes, good.
Okay, then I would ask you also, do you have any employment with the town besides, let's say, a board of education, or employment directly with the town, or are you on any other board?
I'm in the board. It was only coming.
Do you have any...
I work for, but no, I do not work for the town.
Do you have any other business before this board?
With the... No.
Do you have an application before this board?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so you do have business before this board?
Well, I have an application, yes. Believe me, it was going to the planning board, but yes, it came to the zoning board.
That being the case, speaking with our attorney, I would consider you out if you wouldn't mind initially to sit in the front row. Thank you. You agree? I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, that being the case, I'll now start with the... I suppose the agenda. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the January 24th, 2013 meeting. As normal, I'll ask our attorney if what's before the board that the board has reviewed is in fact what occurred at that meeting and any amendments or changes that any board member wanted. It does. Does any board member have any changes that they want or any additions or modifications to these minutes? Not seeing any, I'll move this for approval. And as for a second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero.
Yes.
Melissa Rodriguez.
No.
She abstained. You abstained. She abstained. Casey Alvarado.
Yes.
Okay, do you share?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes.
The same thing for the February 28th, um, board meeting minutes. Again, I'll ask our attorney whether the minutes that the board has in front of it and reviewed reflect what happened at that meeting and any changes or other requirements that the board added.
Yes.
That being the case, all these board members, whether regarding those minutes, they have any amendments or additions they want. I know you were... About a minute. Uh, that being the case, I'll move for approval and ask for a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero. Melissa Rodriguez.
Aye.
Casey Alvarado.
Abstained.
Uh, we have no communication. Payment resolution. The first payment resolution relates to a court reporting service. No, Metropolitan Court Reporting for one matter in the amount of $435. And again, I'll ask our secretary whether she has reviewed this matter and does this matter relate to a zoning board matter as opposed to a planning board matter?
Yes, they're looking at the zoning board.
That being the case, I'll move this for approval and ask for a second. Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero.
Yes.
Melissa Rodriguez.
Yes.
Casey Alvarado.
Yes.
The next, uh, payment resolution on the agenda relates to our attorneys and for three matters in a total amount of $1,200. And, um, again, I'll ask our secretary whether she's reviewed these three matters and are they in fact planning board, a zoning board matter as opposed to a planning board matter?
Yes, they are zoning board matters.
And I can also tell you that I have reviewed, um, these three invoices with our attorney, and she has made whatever changes and refinements that I've wanted, and I feel comfortable recommending this to the full board for approval, and do so. Move it for full approval. And as for a second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero.
Yes.
Melissa Rodriguez.
Yes.
Casey Alvarado.
Yes.
The next relates to our planning consultants, Bird Soul Services, in the total amount of $580 for three matters. These, again, I've consulted with our planner and asked her, and she has in fact refined these as I've requested. I feel comfortable recommending these to the full board for approval and do so, and move them for approval. And as for a second, is there a second? Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero.
Yes.
Melissa Rodriguez.
Yes.
Casey Alvarado.
Yes.
The last payment resolution relates to the Jersey Journal for our publication. It relates to two matters that I suppose are within the knowledge of our secretary, since she made the resolution by invoice number as opposed to title of the, um, application. So it's an amount of $103.46, and I'll ask her whether within her knowledge, because nobody else here knows, that she knows that these are planning, that these are zoning matters as opposed to planning matters.
Yes, the zoning board matters.
You're absolutely, of course, your heart, hope to die positive.
Yes, let's keep moving.
Let's keep it moving. I feel like I'm home. Okay. That being the case, I'll move this for approval and ask for a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero.
Yes.
Melissa Rodriguez.
Yes.
Casey Alvarado.
Yes.
The next matter on the agenda is the memorializing resolution for the matter of Meridale Boulevard. I'm adjourning that to April, to our regular meeting on April the 25th. The next matter on the agenda is a memorializing resolution regarding the Park, the Meridia Park Avenue matter that we heard of last meeting. I asked our attorney whether the memorializing resolution that's in fact in front of the board adequately reflects what happened at that hearing and any changes that the board has required of the application. That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. It's fine, yes. That being the case, I'll move it for approval and ask for a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero.
Abstained.
Uh, Melissa Rodriguez.
Yes.
Casey Alvarado.
Yes.
The next matter on the agenda is a memorializing resolution in the Salva matter, which created a studio apartment on the first floor. I believe we did this also last meeting. And again, I'll ask for our attorney whether the memorializing resolution that's before the board adequately reflects not only what occurred at that meeting but any restrictions and requirements that the board placed on that application. That being the case, I'll move this for approval also. And as for a second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kenneth Blaine.
Yes.
Larissa Marero.
Yes.
I'm abstaining.
Don't worry.
I'm abstaining. Casey Alvarado.
The next matter on the agenda is the continued hearing in the matter of Joseph Felice, properly located 6025-D31 Boulevard East. That matter will also be postponed to the April 25th. That, okay. That matter will also be postponed to the April 25th meeting except for the fact that the applicant would like to present their notices of publication and notification to our attorney for approval. That is what is being done at this very precise moment as we speak.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, it's going to be viewed as a new application. It's not a continuation of the old application, just to avoid any potential issues of...
I actually heard what you said. That being the case, then as opposed to adjourning this matter, I will announce to the public that the first hearing on this matter, since it's being presented as a new matter, will be at the next meeting, and we'll deal with it at that time to see whether we have a vice chair, et cetera, et cetera, to see if we can continue. But right now, the Felice matter located at 6025-D31 Boulevard East is scheduled to be heard at the board's regular meeting on April 25th.
The notices are adequate.
Um, I'm gonna do this in reverse form. The next matter on the agenda is the Exo Properties Application regarding 5701 Boulevard East. Does anybody hear on that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
I'm Mr. Boyd. I'm the director of Alonso. Alonso, I'm ready. Come be happy, yeah.
Our attorney confirms the notices. As this matter involves a use variance and is some very well-versed members of the audience who have attended interminably and forever the zoning board meetings, they all know that for a use variance, we need five affirmative votes if in fact it's to be passed. At this point in time, we only have four members of the zoning board. So we couldn't, even if we wanted to, approve it tonight. So this matter will be adjourned to the April 25th meeting in the hope, in the prayer, in the vigil, in anything else you want to say. And by that point in time, we will have a full complement of zoning board members so we can conduct our business as, in the same efficient manner we always do. Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
The next matter and final matter on the agenda is the Raymond Ray's Matter regarding 300-67th Street. The applicant proposes, I suppose, as I remember reading it, to legalize an apartment. Uh, please, for the record.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Melissa, we will be happy with Raymond Ray's. And likewise, Mr. Chairman, this is a density issue. If I could present the, uh, the notice.
Please feel free. Are we lucky? That's an A to D variance, I mean, D5.
Yeah. No, no, we...
Let me ask you.
This is December 21st. This is for when you were noticing the planning board.
Give me the second one. And then it wasn't, it wasn't adjourned. We had adjourned, so it was switched from planning board to board adjustment.
You had to move to the board adjustment.
Okay, fine. We're gonna, we have to adjourn, we have to adjourn this to the 25th anyway, which gives you time to renotice.
What happened was that originally, it was the application. Right. That's your point.
No, 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 there's no problem. Your attorney is saying that you all, that you have to renotice the living. Unless you...
No, except that the applicant had spent the additional money on the renoting. So I thought that the...
Well, that's because, I suppose, it was sent to the wrong board. We can continue this conversation, Mr. Boyd.
No, but not at the instructions of the municipality. Yes.
Uh, this lady is also here as a planning board member at the instruction of the municipality. But let me just look at the plans for a second, because one of the things I always have is whenever we're talking about basement apartments, is the problem of the... And this, this can be off the record, because we're gonna get this when they come back anyway. Is the problem of the mechanical room. You know what I'm saying? That's always my concern.
I understand fully what you're saying.
And where is the entrance?
The entrance to the apartment is still up front. If you look at your plan...
So it looks to me like the mechanical room is by...
It's a fully isolated.
Is that the door right there?
That is correct. It says exist in the mechanical room.
So that's the closed door that has the mechanical room. Is that laundry room for the whole building or just the apartment?
It's for the whole building.
All right, and where is the entrance to the apartment?
It's the front.
Yes, you have... Okay, this is, this is it, right?
This is the apartment. One of the...
Okay, so to get to the apartment, you don't have to go through the mechanical room or the laundry room?
That is correct.
Okay, fine, fine. I just wanted to make sure that you're going to have to come back.
Of course.
And I would have this problem, then you'd have to come back again.
No, no, right, right, absolutely. I don't think it was, it's a pre-existing...
No, no, we have many.
No, no, you understand, but I'm just going further.
Where people have to walk through the mechanical room, get in, and we cause them to have new entrances.
Of course.
That's all. All right, that being the case, we'll also adjourn this to April 25th. All right, uh, we don't have jurisdictions, so we don't have to adjourn this. But what we'll do is we'll set you up for April 25th, Maria. Assuming that you renotice in time.
What was I thinking of this?
Your notices to the property owner, which might be more as well. And they would be in January. January 11th. I have two seconds. Is this the notice you sent back to the property owners?
Yes.
Are these...
Yeah, yes, those are the...
These are January 21st. That your act of David is...
Right.
But your car's not stamped. So just, should you guys provide me proof of this? Provide proof of this, and you don't have to read this.
What are the receipts?
Yes, something that demonstrates you...
This is the...
You know what? Mr. Long, you don't have to do this now.
No, no, might as well. I just wanted to make sure that it's...
You can bring, you can bring everything to the 25th, and you can call Maria and Jennifer between now and then.
And you want that?
Oh, God.
Okay, it's why, as it always speaks. Where is the... Oh, Maria, yes? Oh, hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you one way or another on the 25th.
Absolutely.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Maria, Maria, why don't you come up? Because I asked her, and I wanna know from you also as a planning board member, as this board now acts in this form with the same type of high standards that you expected us to do?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks. And I appreciate you coming. It's very for you, and I'm glad you... It's very nice to meet you. And we'll see you when your application comes through. How's that? Oh, April 25th. You have a good... April 25th. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for my own clarification, I just wanna confirm that the notice to the property owners is, is correct.
If you just provide proof of mailing...
Yes, no, no, absolutely. And it's for the...
I'll speak to you after. If, I'll just state for the record, if those notices were sent, the one that I just saw, that notice, that was mailed out, you just have to show me a stamp to show that it was mailed within that...
Oh, no, yeah, absolutely. No, I have...
You will not have to renotice that.
Okay.
And then you will only have to renotice, you will have to do the newspaper publication for the 25th, because the chairman did state that you will come back for the 25th. So that should satisfy your notice.
All right, great. All right, thank you.
That being the case, I'll now open this to the public. Any member of the public would like to step forward and shower immense praise or whatever else you'd like to do on this board? Yes, sir, please step forward.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Um, Francisco Ferrer. This is under 6028 Park Avenue. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to get a little bit of clarity on, um, two or three issues. Some planning board members have been replaced.
I don't know about that. This is not the planning board, this is the zoning board.
I apologize. I get confused. Uh, the zoning board. Some members have been replaced due to conflict of interest.
Actually, some members haven't been replaced. Some members have been removed. They have yet to be replaced.
Okay, so some members were removed, um, due to conflict of interest on the board, correct?
That is not true. They were not removed due to conflict of interest. There is no conflict of interest. They were removed because the statute specifically says that to be a zoning board member, unlike planning board, the zoning board is independent of the town, and the statute says that you cannot be a elected public, you cannot be a public official or hold a position in the town.
Did some of these members hold a position in the town?
Well, they held positions in the sense of one was a member of the planning board, I'm sorry, of the parking authority. You know, some were, one was employed by the police department. We considered that to be a position in town. That is why they were removed.
So that consists of a conflict of interest?
No, it's not a conflict of interest. It's because they had a position in town. If the statute had wanted to say conflict of interest, it would have said conflict of interest. I didn't say so.
Okay, nevertheless, they shouldn't have been on the board. They weren't qualified members to be on the board.
They should not have been appointed.
They should have never been appointed.
That is correct.
Does that render any decisions that they made viable for re-submission?
That is...
Does everything, decision that they made should have been looked at again due to this fact that they shouldn't have been on the board?
That is only a question that a court can decide, not for this board.
Okay, um, is that being decided by a court?
I don't know. We have not been noticed that it's been decided. We have not been noticed. In other words, I guess...
Because it's something you must look into.
Well, no, not really, because I suppose the time for appeal on almost everything is run. That would be an issue for appeal by someone who would take an appeal from a matter that has not been appealed.
Well, I see it more as a matter of the zoning board secured the decisions that they rendered were fair and just.
I have no concern whatsoever that all decisions up until this point, except for one that I disagreed with vehemently, have been fair and just. There's no question in my mind.
So let's base it on that one for an example.
That had nothing to do with the issue you were talking about.
Of course it does. The members on the board, they shouldn't have been on the board.
I'm not gonna debate it with you. Thank you for your point.
Um, is it a conflict or not a conflict, as you say? Are you able, as in the example of this lady right here, to work on the planning board and the zoning board? Are you able to do both? That won't constitute a...
No, that's legally permissible.
That's legally permissible?
Uh, no, actually, actually, I'll try to clarify. If I'm wrong, I'm sure I'll be slapped by our attorney, as I generally am when I'm wrong. The planning board, again, unlike the zoning board, which is independent of the town, has various levels of appointees. In fact, a commissioner can sit on the planning board. However, there is a level that does not permit anybody that has a position with the town, et cetera, et cetera, to fill that level. Though that level of appointees are the people that have come, that's why I answered the questions I did in the beginning, that have come to sit on the zoning board, because they're the only ones from the planning board that are permissible in emergency situations to sit on the zoning board.
Okay.
Right? Good job. I got a good job.
The class, the class four members of the planning board.
D1 through 4.
Yes.
Thank you.
Only class four are permitted to sit on the zoning board.
Correct.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, um, my name is Melissa Kellerman, 6601 Boulevard East. And, um, I was at the February meeting where, um, the application to do some amendments to the Meridia Park Avenue was voted on and it was approved. Now, I know, I look that the, it was memorial, the initial building was memorialized March 24th, 2011. I don't know at the time if there were, um, people who voted for it were also employees of the town, which would be a problem. But I know in February, I don't, I think Mr. Alvarez, he was in the parking authority?
No, actually, they weren't.
But at last...
No, no, I'm sorry. Let me just answer your question. Going back to that original approval, which I believe was done on a library across the street, as I recall.
Well, it was March 24th, 2011.
Yeah, I think it was in a library across the street, because there was a conflict with a town event or something in the chambers. I don't believe that either Mr., I don't believe any of the members that had been removed, I don't believe they were members of the zoning board. I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I don't believe it.
Okay, I mean, the thing is that...
That's like three, two years ago.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna tear it down, but last month, when there were some amendments, he wanted to do some extra stuff that was voted on, and the people, the people who voted on it were, worked for the town. I believe Mr., listening to Mr. Alvarez, he's in the parking authority. And in this, um, Meridia Park Avenue, in the original application, I think 30 spaces...
Mr. Kellerman, let me, Mr. Kellerman, let me ask you, answer you the same way. This is a matter for an appeal issue if somebody wants to take that matter to court. That's not a matter for the zoning board at this point. This zoning board is moving forward in the best way it can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna hire a lawyer, but I just wanna bring it to your attention...
Well, the other thing I would say to you is the amendment that they sought last month was very minor.
It was, it was minor, just to bring it to your attention, that the third, this particular property, there's 30 spaces, that's with the Western Europe Parking Authority, just to bring it to your attention, there's nothing, it's water under the bridge now, and I think Mr. Alvarez, that's his...
He would recuse himself from that.
No, we kicked him off for that.
He was, he did not participate in that hearing.
He didn't participate, okay, I just wanna bring it to your attention, maybe to be more, a little more conscientious going forward.
Excuse me? No, no, I'm speaking to you.
No, but you know, just, you know, just...
Is it your opinion that we are not conscientious?
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that this, this thing, I'm, I'm part, I'm so...
No, but I mean, but do you understand what our attorney said to you? We, we asked, and he consented...
Okay, I don't remember that.
...to step down into the audience, so he did not partake in the Meridia Park Avenue decision, because he was in fact a member of the parking authority board. And, I mean, I pointed it out to him, he was right there, right there in the, in the hall. Whenever you look at that, at that project, the project is just replete with, with words that part of the parking are set aside for the public to be operated, but by the Western Europe Parking Authority, I mean, there's no question about it.
Mr. Alvarez, he did recuse himself.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make...
She's a love workin' space tonight.
Yeah, okay, but I just, you know, I, I just, I hate this, whenever I walk by it, I hate this development.
So that was a conservative action.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, John Kellman, 6600 Boulevard East. I was just wondering what happened since the last meeting, when you adjourned the Meridia Boulevard Memorialization, you said you were going to court to seek a declaration of rejection.
Oh, yeah, well, we didn't, that was, that was obviated, because the town in fact took steps to resolve that issue. The issue related, again, as I, as I said, probably to the composition of the board, and the town took affirmative action on its own to, to resolve that issue, and that's why you see the composition of the board that you see tonight.
Right, okay, I was just wondering if it was still pending or...
No, it's been resolved, but the town has taken affirmative action to resolve that issue, and it only has to take one more step, which is to appoint a full complement of zoning board members, not that we don't, well, of course, I mean, if you want to change boards, we'd love to.
All right. Just a moment, I'll just... The funding inquire...
Of course.
Were the three new, newly appointed zoning board members who were appointed in October among the five who were renewed, no?
No.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Well, she, she was new.
She's, she was appointed.
Melissa's new. Some were new, some were old, there was a mix.
Okay, and if I may inquire, when those three members were replaced, did they...
They haven't been replaced.
No, no, I mean, the three members who were replaced in October. We had three new board members in October. Did their predecessors resign, or were they removed?
No, oh, I don't think anybody's been removed, I mean, of those in, in October, I think they were holdovers and their terms had expired, and the new people were appointed to fill those terms. I don't think they were removed in the sense of the board of commissioners taking an affirmative vote to remove somebody. That's, I don't, that's, that did not happen.
Okay.
I believe their terms had expired, and therefore new appointments were made.
Well, on, on the, the board of commissioners' agenda for September, maybe October, no, it's probably September, the preceding months prior to October, two people were appointed to replace two individuals whose terms were supposed to expire according to the agenda in November of 2014, and one individual who was replaced, her term was supposed to expire in December of 2012.
Oh, they may have resigned. Carrie, I'm sorry, Carrie, one, one did resign, she, those people may have resigned for personal reasons. One had a family health matter, no, you're, you're drawing my recollection, one had a personal, family health matter that was very serious, and I forgot the other one, but you're correct that if these people filled the remainder of terms, it wasn't because people were removed as an affirmative act by the commissioners, it's because those board members had in fact resigned for their own reasons.
Okay.
You're, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting.
Okay.
I see, I see familiar faces in the audience, nobody wants to come forth and give us comments or talk to us or anything? It's a holiday, come on, please come forward.
I go ahead.
I mean, the NCAA tournament doesn't start...
You don't have to encourage me to talk. Hi, my name is Janice Zorovic, that's Lacy, last name, Z O R O V I C H, and I come from North Bergen, but I'm interested in the development. And, oh, I'm sorry, don't brag about it, but...
In which development?
Well, most of them.
Oh, okay.
But just with these people here, you were saying that they had to go to a lawyer or something for past decisions if they didn't agree, or they thought that there was a conflict or something. Wouldn't they be able to go to, like, I don't know, local finance board, or Department of Community Affairs to bear their complaints before?
Not if, I don't believe so if the appeal time is running.
If the appeal time off?
Has, has ended.
Oh.
You have a 45-day appeal time?
Oh, it's 45 days, okay. Oh, all right.
That's my belief.
So if they, before the 45 days, we appeal it to you, or do we...
No, no, you appeal in court.
Oh, we have to hire lawyers to do that?
Yeah, yeah, that's not usual, we've had, we've had a...
No, no, I know, like, board of commissioners.
So there's two ways you can appeal. You can appeal it by filing an action in the State Superior Court by the town, or you can make an appeal to the commissioners, to the municipal body of the municipality, of the town. So you can make an appeal to the board of commissioners.
And that's within, what, 45 days? Everything, okay.
And it's 45 days after the adoption, after the publication of the notice of the adoption of the resolution. So something gets approved at our next meeting, the resolution gets passed, and then the town publishes the notice of that approval.
Okay.
The 45-day period begins when that publication's completed.
Okay, complication, right. Okay, because like, sometimes if you don't agree with the decision to have to go to court, it's like, especially if you have a whole bunch of people, you know, before you go to court, we should be able to resolve it, so that would be a really...
And I was appropriately corrected, that's why we paid her the big bucks that we paid.
Thank you so much.
You notice all the consultants are laughing when I said that.
Okay.
But, for instance, today, we passed a memorializing resolution. That's what she's talking about.
Right, okay, so now when they get it published?
They would be published in the paper, and you would have 48 days from that point.
Okay, and how, about how many days? I mean, do you have like a certain time to put it in the paper?
It would take probably next week sometime.
You have to, within 10 days...
From here, okay.
From here, they have to publish.
Oh, okay, so you have the 10 days to look for it, and...
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wish the commission is as nice as you guys, so I...
As far as I know, they are, why are you leaving?
I'm on my way to my next one.
Oh, you worried me, that's why I said something. Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Good evening.
My name is Jerry Paradas.
What's that say?
Paradas, out of the, we go west here. Let's have a quick question, how many people do you need, how many votes do you need to memorialize a resolution?
Actually, I suppose you just need one.
So, if an application's approved, and there are seven members to the zoning board, let's say five of the, let's say all seven vote yes for that application, at the next meeting, those members who voted yes for that application are the ones eligible to vote on behalf of the resolution to memorialize it. So if only five of the seven are here, those five are eligible to vote. If only one, that one, it's, it's just, you're just voting to approve the resolution to say it accurately reflects the vote we took at the last meeting.
Let me say it differently.
That's all the memorialization.
Let me say it differently, if I can, if I can clarify that.
I'm sorry.
We have a seven-member board with two votes, so it's seven members. Let's say you only, let's say there was an application, you only needed four votes instead of five, some variances need five, four. So let's say it was a 4-3 vote, okay, fine, then you come to the next meeting, we have a memorializing resolution, and only four members show up, which is a quorum of the seven, so you can have a meeting. But those four, three of them were the ones that voted against, so there's only one that voted in favor, follow me?
Yeah.
That one gets the resolution.
Just that one?
Yeah.
Just that one?
You see what I'm saying?
Oh, okay.
When it gets to the resolution, all you need is one of the four that voted in favor.
While the resolution is just...
One that voted yes for that.
Very good. The resolution is just...
I went from fine to very good, I'm watching.
The resolution is just okay, you know, approving or...
Then approving the...
All it is is a report on what happened at the...
Correct.
Thank you.
It doesn't change anything, you're not permitted to change anything, it's just a report on what happened at the...
This makes me...
You can't add, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments that anybody would like to step forward and make regarding the zoning board? Not seeing anybody, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's such a motion. I'll second that motion. All in favor by voice vote, aye. No ayes at this meeting, adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Well, I'm gonna send you to the...